First of all, we'd like to welcome everyone from Jackson County to the Department of Education Building in our April 18th regular meeting. Before we get started, we actually had a supporting colleague who passed away on April 2nd, Professor Corners, we all knew her as Patty. Patty was a really good person. She was also an excellent employee and very good at her job. So if everybody would, please have one moment of silence for her.
Eat me birthday!
Under communication today, we have the San Gap Elementary presentation, which you must whenever you're ready.
All right, first I want to give you a little information about our Artsy Tigers program. The Artsy Tigers is an after-school arts program that meets once a week from 3:30 to 5:00. During these meetings, most, all forms of art can be found. Club enjoys creating in music, drama, dance, and the visual arts. Artsy Tigers began in 2016 when Miss Lisa Young, a third-grade teacher with a passion for art, felt there was a need for students with a creative mind to have an outlet. Since then, third, fourth, and fifth-grade students have created in multiple art forms. The club begins the year with visual projects until time for pairs with a Christmas performance. At that time, students practice a play where they will be acting, singing, dancing, making props, working on the set, and performing for the school. A spring concert of plays held in the spring along with several visual art projects to round out the year. Through the years, Artsy Tigers have enjoyed guest artists provided by Artists for All Kentucky. During some of these visits, students have learned about and created fiber arts focused on their heritage such as quilts, wall paintings, scarves, and more. They also had a visit from a performing artist where they learned about instruments and songs from their culture. Students sang, played instruments, and wrote their own songs. Artsy Tigers have also enjoyed guest artists from their communities such as teachers and parents. Many people have helped to make Artsy Tigers successful over the years. The club does not exist without their wonderful help. This year, they had help from Ms. Cassie Sparks, Ms. Sandra Jones, as well as Camp AJ volunteers. Artsy Tigers are very thankful for their time and effort in creating a place where creative minds can have an enjoyable artsy experience. Our Artsy Tigers have prepared a performance for you tonight, so at this time, I'll turn it over to them.
I wanna make a change for my life. It's gonna feel real good, gonna make a difference, gonna make it right. As I turn up the collar on, my favorite makes her cold, this is my broken heart. I see the kids in the street, I'm not sure who in my eyes, pretending not to see their needs. A summer's disregard, a broken bottle top, and a one-hand soul. They follow each other on the wind you know, because they got nowhere to go. That's why I want you to know, I'm starting with the man in the mirror. I'm asking him to change his ways. No message could've been any clearer, if you wanna make your world a better place, take a look at yourself and make that change. I've been addicted love, a selfish kind of love, it's not that I refuse. If someone had already walked, couldn't be really mean pretending that we're not alone. A little deeply scarred, somebody's broken heart, and a washed-out dream. They follow a pattern of the wind you see, and without no place to be, that's why I'm starting with me. I'm starting with the man in the mirror. I'm asking him to change his ways. No message could've been any clearer, if you wanna make your world a better place, take a look at yourself and make that change. I'm starting with the man in the mirror. I'm asking him to change his ways. No message could've been any clearer, if you wanna make your world a better place, take a look at yourself and make that change. I'm starting with the man in the mirror, oh yeah, I'm asking him to change his ways. No message could've been any clearer, if you wanna make your world a better place, take a look at yourself and make that change. I'm getting rough, white, got time, you can't close your mouth. With that man in the mirror, oh yeah, I'm asking him to change his ways. No message could've been any clearer, if you wanna make your world a better place, take a look at yourself and make that change. Na 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 na.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. So I want to thank you all for inviting us, thank you for having us this evening. I just wanted to go through some of the activities that our students have participated in so far this year at San Gap. First is gonna be the McKee Homecoming Parade back in September. We drew names from each grade level, so two students from each grade level participated. Ms. Young kind of spearheaded the float. We had two of them stay after school and worked hard to get her float together. I had the privilege of driving the float as the Tiger. It's kind of difficult to see out of that four-inch gap there in the Tiger's mound, so luck that didn't hit anybody, but that was a very, a very fun day for us. We also participated in the McKee Christmas Parade with our extracurricular teams, and it was dark, so I didn't put the Tiger head on that night. That was just too dangerous. But the kids had a great time. It was cold, but we, we had a good time there in the parade. For fall festivities, we took several field trips back in September and October. This picture was our fourth and fifth graders that took a trip to Evans Orchard, and our kindergarteners toured through its husking patch. We also took some trips to Camp AJ. Camp AJ has been terrific park to work with San Gap. We have tutors in the school that work with us. We take field trips up there, and they're great camp counselors. I was able to go on this trip with our second and third graders. They had great stories. They'd go and campfire and roasted s'mores, and our kids were talking about that for weeks after, after we got back. So that was a terrific trip. As far as our extracurricular activities, we had a ton of students come out for all of our teams. We had so many, opening night, I let everybody perform, and our gym was packed. They had people standing around the wall. We didn't have places to sit them. So after the first performance, we had to start staggering who could perform, and I didn't have the room to let everybody come. We had so many kids, which is a great problem to have. All that involvement was, was great. Our first picture there is our Tipping Tigers. They're getting ready to perform at the county tournament, and then the side bin there is our dance team. Our girls' basketball team had a great season. We, they took a field trip to Memorial Coliseum and got to watch the UK girls play. We're sending three fifth-grade girls up to middle school next year. They should be able to join the middle school's team, have an immediate impact, be of benefit as soon as they get there. Our boys' basketball team, very successful. They made a great run in the district tournament, sending several fifth graders up to middle school next year too. But the middle school's not just getting great athletes, they're getting great kids. These are first-grade students and just good all-around people. I mean, we've got some of the greatest kids that you'll find anywhere at San Gap, and some great parents. The parent support is key, but I hate to, there's a lot of faces there that I hate to send to the middle school next year. I'm gonna miss them, but the middle school's gonna be very, very fortunate to get them. This is our archery team, who had a terrific season. Archery team's coached by Mr. Tracy Van Winkle and Mr. Todd Rose. And then our cheerleaders here on the right, they've done a terrific job all year cheering on our teams. Besides our academic team, they made a great run in the district tournament at South Tiner. They had several students that placed in several categories. Luke? Dozier, you placed, didn't you? Stand up.
I, I didn't place. I got close.
You came close, so I'll take it.
I'll still stand up.
But I do appreciate all of your work and your great job. You helped us a little bit. We're grateful, we'll recognize you. Ms. Peters coached the team. They had a very successful season once again. Great group of kids. I was with them pretty much all day at Tiner that day. I got to moderate their matches. And I'll, I'll throw some, give some credit to the other two elementary schools. We've got some great kids in this county, and our academic team is gonna be incredibly strong when you take all three and combine them when they finally get to middle school. So the future's very bright for Jackson County. We had a Veterans Day performance. We were honored to have the JROTC cadets from the high schools, well Sergeant Diane Smith. Ms. Smith served as our guest speaker. She came in and told of her experiences, also gave our students a history lesson on the different branches of the military, also gave us a quick lesson on, on Veterans Day in general. We had a jam-packed gym, as you can see there. Each grade level performed a song. Each veteran in attendance was recognized for their service. Just a, a very positive event, I think, that our guests were honored. We had several that, that came out. We had, I don't remember the exact number of veterans that came, but we, we did have several. We were, we were very glad to get to recognize those. One of our strengths, I think, school-wide and county-wide, is our, our community partnerships. There's not really anybody that you can't reach out to that won't come and help you in some way. And first off is our mystery reader. Sheriff Hayes came and read to our kindergarten classes. I was in a meeting with Sheriff Hayes and I asked him if he would come and read, and he said this was his busiest time, but he would try to come after Christmas. And I said, "Well, after Christmas, kindergartners can read. I don't need you then." So he, he did bake some time and came early and had read to our kids. The San Gap Fire Department is always great. They're always willing to come speak with their kids. They bring the fire trucks up. Kids always love that. They let our preschoolers come down and do a tour of the firehouse, which, which they loved, and they were, they came back wearing their fire hats, and they were, they were very excited. The Friday before spring break, Sheriff Ozies came, brought his deputies. He done a demonstration with the dog, and he passed out the little badge stickers, and the kids had a great time with his, with his presentation. They, they spoke to our kids about the job duties that they have. They talked about drug prevention, other police-related matters. We had our Lemonade War literacy night. The way the Lemonade War worked, through the month of March, in the beginning, we passed out the Lemonade War book by Jacqueline Davies. Teachers volunteered to read the chapter. They recorded themselves reading it, and then each night, we posted the recording on our YouTube Facebook page. Every kid in the building got a book, so they could either read the book at home with their parents each night, or they could watch the recording, whichever they preferred. We would ask questions each morning at school, and then if you knew the correct answer, you turned your name in, and we drew for prizes throughout the month. And then our culminating activity was that Lemonade War on March 28th. We had a terrific turnout. My staff put a ton of work into it to pull it off. Each grade level had a game or activity. It was obviously lemon-themed or related back to the book in some way. There's Ms. Bellamy, our youth service center director. She set up a lemonade stand, passed out lemonade. Terrific event, very positive event. I think our students enjoyed it. Our staff enjoyed setting it up. It was just an all-around, really, really positive night. One of my favorite programs is the Lunch with the Principal program that Ms. Bellamy supervises and kind of spearheads for us. So at the end of each nine weeks, any student in fourth or fifth grade that has a 3.5 or higher GPA gets to go to Dairy Queen. I get to go with them. And we saw the number of students who qualify slowly increase, so that's, that's great. We keep, we keep adding a few each time that rolls around. And I love getting to go out and reward our kids. I love to reward our kids for their hard work, because it's hard. Fifth grade is, is difficult, and for those students to, fourth and fifth grade, for those students to qualify on a grade level, there's a lot of work that goes into it, and they need to be recognized and rewarded for it. So very, very good program there. A few final highlights. Number one's gonna be our school resource officer. We're very thankful to have Deputy Slung with us. It's just great to know that we have him as an added safety measure. His presence is very welcome at our school. He's walked through and talked to the kids at lunch, and went in a few classrooms, and just making sure the kids are getting to know him, and he's had a, a great presence so far in the building. The completion of our school roof is terrific, because when I first took over in August, the rainstorm came, the custodians, myself, were having to take buckets and garbage cans. We knew where the leaks were, and we would have to, have to catch the drips, but now we don't have anything to worry about. The roof is, is great. It was much needed, and it's very appreciated by every, everyone in the building. We're very thankful to have, to have our new roof. The new preschool playground, if you've not been out to see the playground, it's worth the trip. That's as nice a playground as you'll find anywhere. You can't go to any park, anywhere, and find a nicer playground. The, the brown that you see there, it was laid like concrete. They kind of poured out of, I don't know, it did look like blacktop or something, and they padded it down, but it's soft when you walk on it. It's, you know, there's no wood chips, there's no dirt, there's no mud. It's, and even under the slides, it's softer, the blue part there, you see, is softer than the brown part around it. So the number of accident reports coming in from recess has been cut in half based on when they fall on this toward when they fell on what we had before. So very nice playground. I mean, you, the pictures don't really do it justice. It's worth coming out and checking it out if you've not, if you've not saw it yet. And then there's just the, the preschoolers love these little things. This thing spins. They get it and spin, and they, they have a really good time on the playground. So we're very thankful to have, to have it together and, and finally usable. So just in closing, I want to thank each of you for the opportunity to speak tonight, for allowing our students to perform. On behalf of San Gap Elementary, I want to thank each of you for all that you do for our school and for our district. Your hard work and dedication to our students is greatly appreciated, and we are very thankful for your service and your support. Thank you all.
To be 2023 Jackson County Public Schools Summer Success Academy presentation, Ms. Norris, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Cameron has to do a quick tutorial on how to use the pointer, so I have to find you that right. Mr. Smith asked that I share with you some information about our Summer Success Academy. It's gonna be very similar to the programming that we've offered for the past two summers. There are minimal changes, but for our Summer Success Academy, our goal is to address learning loss and/or unfinished learning. So basically, we're training students who have achievement gaps, and we want to help students be able to successfully move on to the next grade level by providing them with essential content, skills, and concept knowledge that they miss having. We also want to help students complete high school credits in order to graduate from high school, and we also want to address social, social, emotional needs of students. So for our summer school, whatever grade the students are in this year, they will attend Summer Success Academy in that same grade. So if they're a fifth-grade student, for example, at San Gap, then they would participate in fifth-grade summer school at San Gap. They would not go on to sixth-grade content. So our objective is to engage students in in-person, small-group learning opportunities. We do not offer Summer Success Academy as a virtual learning opportunity. It's in-person. We want the kids participating at the school. We want to address those achievement gaps by teaching essential skills and standards. We want to do that small group, small group instruction, but we also want opportunities for individualized instruction, and then we also want to offer enrichment opportunity and also incorporate social, emotional learning. Our Summer Success Academy is actually based on a research model referred to as a Vocation Academy, and that is where you get multiple hours of instruction in a short number of days, and the research says that in doing so, you can achieve student achievement. So when we start with our Summer Success Academy, we always start with the pre-assessment data, and the pre-assessment data is typically their end-of-year diagnostic data. At the elementary level, that's gonna be I-Ready. At the middle school, that's gonna be I-Excel. At the high school, it's either going to be reading plus or Alex. So when our students take these individual assessments, we use that data to create priority lists of students who may have learning needs that we want to help address. So we use that end-of-year diagnostic data, but it also becomes the pre-assessment when they enter summer school. We want to design and deliver in-person instruction based on the student's individual instructional gaps in relation to essential current year grade or context goes in concepts for successful learning at that level. We utilize digital curriculum for no more than 30 minutes per day. That's often a question that we get, is our students just gonna be working on the computer? And actually, in our model, we limit that to 30 minutes, and we do that specifically so that it gives the teachers time to work with other students one-on-one. We do encourage formative assessment frequently, and then we ask that they do an end-of-program assessment as well. So we begin with a data collection sheet to generate lists of students who have the greatest need. We have limited personnel who are teaching in our Summer Success Academy, which means we have to have a limited number of seats, so we always start with the students who have the greatest need, and we do that based on the data that we have. We use multiple data points to identify students for participation, and our priority group is, are those students who are scoring in the 30th percentile or below on diagnostic assessments. As I said, it's multiple points of data, so that's one piece of the puzzle, but we're also looking for kids who have failing grades, or maybe they don't have any grades due to attendance issues. We want to target students who are in tier three. We want to identify students who have chronic absenteeism or participation issues, and we also look at teacher recommendations so that the student is not prepared to be successful at the next grade level. We really want to use this time to help catch students up so that they can be successful moving forward. In the event that, once we identify the, the priority group of students, if we don't fill all of the spots that we have, then we move on to the next group, because we want every child that we can have an opportunity to do this. So our secondary caseload are those students who are scoring below the 30th percentile on the diagnostic assessments. They may have average classroom performance, but they may have gaps. Maybe they have trouble specifically with adding and subtracting fractions, and so having targeted instruction on a specific skill may help them to really excel at the next grade level. So we're looking for those kids who may have gaps in knowledge. It may be a kid who makes a B, but it could also be a child who's making a C or a D. This is typically our tier-two students. They may have some attendance or participation issues, and once again, we always look at teacher recommendations. Who's the child that's really gonna benefit from this extra instruction to help them be successful at the next grade? So once again, these are the diagnostic assessments that we use across the district as a foundation for these lists. And once we get the student list, we put that together, looking at our student data, and then we begin to develop individual student learning goals. So we will have two days of training after school's out before summer school begins, and the teachers will come in with their list of the priority students, list of students who've committed to county, and the teacher will look at that student data, and they will begin to identify student learning goals for that child. What is the essential information that child needs to be the most successful student who she can be? So the teachers will look at priority standards, which include essential content, essential skills, and essential concepts, and then they'll develop a student learning goal based on that data, and it will specify improvement in student learning growth and/or achievement. And we give them a template that they complete. So questions we ask them to think about when they're looking at those individual kids, you know, why is this student here? What are the goals for this specific student? How will I measure that students are making progress towards this goal? And then ultimately, how will I determine whether or not they met the goal that I had for them? So our daily schedule. Staff are on-site at 8:00. Instruction begins, I'm sorry, breakfast begins at 8:30. We have 15 minutes. Breakfast is provided to all participants. Then we have our first instructional block for 90 minutes. Then we have an enrichment block. Then we have lunch, also provided to all students. Then we have our second instructional block. Then we have a physical activity block. Then we have our third instructional block. Then we have 30 minutes of independent learning or individualized tutoring, and that's the time slot where they could do digital learning if they choose to. And then we start preparing to leave between 3:15 and 3:30. And this gives us a total of five hours of core instruction. We break up the individual blocks with enrichment and physical activity and lunch, so that it's not, you're sitting there for almost five hours with straight content being delivered. So we have a very specific targeted schedule to make sure that we're getting that, we're getting that instructional timing in, but we're chunking it with other activities to engage the kids. So the research says that you need to get that five hours in to start seeing changes in student achievement. And if you think of it from the point of view of, a lot of our core instruction is a 55- to 60-minute block. Within a single day, kids are getting a week of instruction. So once again, with digital programming, we stress that it's only allowed during the last 30 minutes for independent learning. That isn't to say that they can't use online programming to deliver the lesson or for the info support, but we're saying for kids to be doing completely independent learning, we max that out at 30 minutes, and it's at a very specific time of day. So students can log in with a clever ID as normal, and students will be, I don't know, students will be a little, that's a typo, so disregard that last bullet. The instructional block, instructional blocks should come to a balance, so we give them examples of best practices. So when we're thinking about that 90-minute block, we're recommending that they always begin each block with an open activity, that then they provide direct instruction where they share with the students their learning goals or their daily learning objectives for that day. We encourage teachers to do an I-do, we-do, you-do model, where the teacher I-do, I present that information to you, or I model that information, then we do it together to make sure that they understand how to do it, and then we give them time for independent practice. So that's the model we encourage. So, that's the model we encourage them to use. We also want them to have opportunities for the kids to work collaboratively and engage in that academic dialogue with peers. We feel like there should be ground breaks within the instruction. There should be frequent opportunities to monitor student progress. And then we ask that they do an exit split at the end of each instructional block to go back and measure. This is my learning goal for my students. Did I master that, or do I need to change my instruction when I get to my next fourth block? So, it is rigorous instruction, it's timely, it's on grade level. It should include varied activities within the block, opportunities for kids to have academic dialogue and hands-on learning, and various limited stretches of sit-and-get or completely independent work. We want the kids engaged with the teacher and engaged with one another. So, this is an example of a sample schedule. And we do ask that the teachers prepare lesson plans during that two-day training. And this is what we recommend as far as breaking up the block so that they have multiple activities during that. So, as I said, five hours equals, a single day equals one week of regular instruction. So, it's highly intense. For our enrichment block, we encourage our teachers to think about activities or hobbies that they enjoy doing and sharing those with the students. So, things that we suggest as possible topics, but all of this is generated by the school and those teachers. We mentioned art, music, STEM activities. We have Lego robotics kids, we have Chemex kids, we have Sphero's. We have Rubik's Cube lessons that can be checked out by the schools and used in those enrichment activities. We also want them doing a physical activity block. Examples include sports, dance, exercise. But we know we have some kids that maybe don't want to engage in physical activity, but we don't want kids sitting there on a phone or on a device. So, alternate activities might be working a puzzle with up here, once again, engaging in that dialogue. They might play card games, or they might play board games. But once again, we want kids during summer school engaging with other students and other adults, not, you know, sitting there isolated on their phone or on a device. So, our staffing plan. We do have instructional assistants, we have certified teachers, we have building administrators, we have bus drivers, and we have cooks. Are the, all the different staff roles that help us in delivering this program. So, this is our staffing plan. It is a pre-through-grade-twelve program. So, we have a preschool teacher per school. Then we have a K-two reading and a K-two math. We have a three-five reading and a three-five math. And then at the high school, we give them the flexibility with those four teachers to fill those roles for credit recovery for those students. And then we also have four staff at Jefferson and Ed. And they have also been incorporating some science and some social studies into that degree. So, the staffing plan is reading and math as our primary focus. But we have given the schools the latitude to address other content areas if they want to. Now, one thing that's special about a Vocation Academy is that that content in that week is a single content area. Kids aren't going to read in math, science, and social studies in a week. They pick an area of focus, and so they do intense instruction in reading for twenty hours. The next week, they come back and they can do intense instruction in math. The third week, it might be social studies. The fourth week, it might be science. And that's what the research says, is that you have to have this intense focused time in a content area in order to see improvement in student achievement. So, when you see those instructional blocks, kids aren't going reading, math, science. They're doing reading, all that. But then in the next week, they can roll over into a different content area, or they can stay in the same content area if that's where they have a need. So, any questions?
This is the month of June, is that right?
It is going to kick off on June the 7th, which is a Monday, and run through June twenty-ninth, which is a Thursday. And we will provide training to staff the week of Memorial Day.
What is the attendance policy on?
It is completely voluntary. The principals work, and the counselors work with the parents to get them to commit. Sometimes we have parents who can only commit to one week. And so, if we can get the kids there in that week and provide that instruction, that's what we do. And when it's a week per content area, a parent may say, "I'm going to be gone the last two weeks of June." Can they attend reading in week one and math in week two? And so, we try to work with the parent. What we really ask for them to do is give us that week. But if they don't attend, they don't attend. There isn't a replication, I guess, except they lose instruction.
And what about if it was, if the student was just able to do half a day, is that an option for them?
They could do that. The research says they're not going to make the improvement that they would if they were there for the full day. So, that's why we ask parents to commit to that. Because it's about what the research says will make a difference in that student's learning. And that's what we're really pushing. We try to be very flexible with the parents. But just letting them be very aware that based on the research, we really need them for those twenty hours that week.
I may have missed it, but did they run a bus?
Yes, we have bus drivers. And we provide transportation. And then we've got extra programming going on at the same time. So, this is all academic programming. But Save the Children is doing summer programming at McKee on a smaller basis. And then Tana is doing Twenty-First Century programming with Save the Children. And that's in addition to these programs. And Sand Gap isn't doing a physical program, but they were awarded fifteen thousand dollars in summer readiness materials for school-age and kindergarten-ready children. And so, those orders, I think, were placed Monday or Tuesday.
Thank you, Summer Success.
Thank you.
So, we move on to item two C, the Jackson County High School water break issue response update. Mr. Stephen Gabbard, our director of Wood and Greens.
I'm here for a public service announcement on what to do when you have a water heater break. But before we do that, we have a gentleman sitting here with us this evening that is, is just, I mean, he has touched the reins to help us with our roofing projects, and that's Richard Cunningham. I didn't know he was going to be here, all right? My grandpa. I appreciate his man. He has made it so easy to get these roofs on these buildings. They're so responsive and work so well with the staff, safety's foremost with them. And it's just been a wonderful experience. I had no idea he was going to be here, all right? I knew you had a grandchild at Sand Gap, didn't know you'd be here tonight. So, we want to recognize him. Okay, you all know about the water heater burst at the high school? So, we'll just give you a little quick, brief update on what happened. So, March twenty-seventh, Monday, about five in the morning, got a phone call that we had a water heater that had busted on the second floor, had to be the second floor, of the high school. And that resulted in a significant portion of the building, both the top and bottom floors, receiving a lot of water intrusion and damage. This particular water heater is only about ten years old. Have no idea, but the bottom of it gave out, had a two-inch intake line coming into it. There's no way that the drain next to it could hold that amount of water, it was just impossible. So, we, right here is the actual water heater. Now, this picture was taken right after they got the water shut off, but you still see it coming out down here at the bottom. And you can see the amount of water coming out of that thing. So, we think it happened approximately four in the morning. Our morning custodian got there going on five o'clock. It actually hadn't hit the downstairs yet, we don't think, because he hadn't noticed it. But he just went to get something, come back out and noticed water running down the stairs. And then we'll show you video in a minute of what we walked in on. Again, approximately five AM, he noticed it, notified Mr. Harris, who then quickly notified the maintenance staff and super general. Maintenance person, Robert Vaughn, our maintenance supervisor, he arrived as soon as he could get there. He was able to get all the water shut off from the building, but not before several inches of water impacted both the top and bottom floors. Because of that, no way you can clean all that up, and no way to safely have school. We had to make a quick decision to cancel school that day. Within about an hour, we'd already got ahold of our insurance companies and ServPro who could call. And unfortunately, I learned all this from Sand Gap about four years ago in a water disaster that happened there over Christmas break. That actually ran a couple days in the building because nobody was there. So, I learned, I learned what to do, unfortunately, from that. And so, we had ServPro on notice, they began getting their team together, they began getting their equipment together. And fortunately, and I want to brag on our district custodians and a lot of the staff at the high school who just volunteered to come in. So, within about two hours, we had several custodians from across the district, several staff members from the high school. Maintenance had run and got a lot of our equipment that we were able to procure with COVID, the kibet machines and things, were there to get those, to bring those in there to assist with water cleanup while ServPro was on the way. Okay, so here's, here's a few pictures of some of the damage. You'll see this room right here, and I'll show you video in a minute. It took probably the most damage downstairs. This is an F M B room. You can see water tiles being impacted. You can see water, some of the ceiling tiles that hit the floor, water up here in the ceiling. A few more pictures of tiles fell along certain areas of rooms. This was downstairs in the hallway going back towards the library. So, here, here's, I walk in about five-thirty. You know, I usually don't take wader boots since I build, but I was with wader boots. And you, I hope you can see this, but go ahead and we'll play you a few short videos of what we're looking at. Okay, you see water, you see the water falling from the, the water's not supposed to fall from the ceiling of the school. This has got a lot of dirty kids in the shower or something. It's just not supposed to do it. And you go down, this is the entryway into the library wing. Now, I'm shaggy biddy out of there, so. Okay, this is down the first floor. And that's the hallway down by cafeteria. Do that just a little bit, not too bad. And you can see it's going all the way to the water. Okay, there's a couple other videos. This was the F M B room I was talking about. It probably was the room downstairs that took the worst damage. And you can, you can see the ceiling tiles that already caved in. It come down on some of that cabinetry in there, some of all the appliances. And that room, that room took it pretty good, unfortunately. This is the second floor. One area of concern is right here, that's the elevator shaft. Okay, and water, water did get down to the elevator shaft. And then the top floor was thoroughly inundated by the time we were able to, that's the science room. That's Mr. Harris and his crops. And you kind of see how deep the water is up there. And if you look right here as we start going down this hallway, here's what's concerned. That's rust, probably from the bottom of that water here. Again, it's just ten years old. Nothing's made like it used to be, unfortunately. Okay, so there's just a few short videos of some of the things we discovered. So, in terms of a short-term response, insurance and ServPro contacted to bring in specialized equipment. We had to have electrical inspections because it's very unsafe to walk around water with electrical. They happened the same day. We were fortunate to get people there probably within three hours over there doing inspections. Plumbing inspection same day. Did run into some of the HVAC systems on the first floor, so we had to have all the fire dampers. The units, some of the units that have water that possibly impacted, and all the duct work on that suspected area inspected. That was done within a week, fortunately. Fortunately, we didn't have water get into anything but a little bit of insulation in the duct. We were very fortunate with that. Fire systems had to be inspected, and they were all figured and online within a week. Technology inspections, Cameron was up there not long after I was. And he was looking at all the servers. Fortunately, again, good Lord was looking over us, I'll just tell you. Didn't hit our servers, okay? Energy controls, it didn't hit those. The elevator pit had a little water in it, it had to be drained, and we had to have that inspected. That was all done within a week. And then within, I think, the third day after it happened, fourth, we had our insurance adjuster that came out and walked the building with us to see what was going to have to be done in terms of insurance claims. We had a very quick response in terms of these, I mean, this is morning time. Not a lot of people up, Matty. This is morning time. We had a very quick response by maintenance, custodians, and staff volunteers. And I will tell you this, from Sand Gap, the biggest thing that happened to us at Sand Gap is we lost the floor. And we had to have so much, you remember that, we had to have so much of that floor replaced up there. It was horrible. We had to work for months getting that thing put back together. It looks, right now, everything is looking good. That saved the vast majority of the flooring, which is a huge thing. That's huge, okay? We also saved most of the cabinetry. We've got just a little bit that's probably going to have to be addressed. But some of the custom woodwork where the trophies are located upstairs in the science rooms, they really thought that the quick response and the quick dehumidification of the building saved most of that. ServPro did come in and set up a dehumidification system, and I'll show you a picture of that in just a minute, throughout the building, that what they called baked the building for several days to remove any excess moisture, prevent mold. And then the elevator company also told us that they only located about a half a inch of water in that pit, which they were amazed by. And they really thought that was because of the quick response. So, we were very fortunate there, because that would have been very expensive. Here's some ServPro equipment. Again, you've got your industrial dehumidifiers, plants sitting all over the place. They brought in private loads of those, and those were all over the building. This big machine right here was impressive. That's what they brought in to set up on the side of the school. You'll see the vents coming out of it, those were hung through the hallways. That pumped heat in sucked it out and dried the building very quickly. Okay, and up here, and it's hard to see in the pictures, but you kind of see the plastic tubing that's going down the halls through there that's doing that. And it takes about three days. That's the reason we had to cancel school at high school for a week. You just could not bring kids in with all that. It wasn't the right thing to do. Okay, a longer-term response that we're having, look at, we still have some ceiling tile. You lost, you noticed a lot of ceiling tile. And we actually had, oh, about half of what they needed in stock here. Believe it or not, it's, we've got a supply chain issue with ceiling tile right now. The particular ceiling tile we have to get is on backorder and we're just waiting on it. There were some strobes in the fire alarm that are going to have to be replaced as soon as insurance approves it. That's more of a precautionary thing, just to prevent future issues. Right now, it's working fine. There was one panel that they were, one electrical panel, which was very fortunate, it's just one, that probably have some breakers we're going to replace just to be on the safe side. we're gonna replace just to be on the safe side. Um, some lighting, have a little bit of lighting in that first floor we're gonna replace. Uh, there are a little bit, there is again, some cabinetry that the insurance must approve to replace. Um, contents, we were fortunate, we didn't have a lot of contents that were lost. We did have some. That has to go through the claim process, that has to be processed through insurance, and, uh, we're working with that right now. Uh, the water heater actually was replaced yesterday. So we're back on, we're back in operation on the, Friday, Friday, it was replaced Friday. And, uh, all is well there. And of course, we're working with our insurance company on financial reimbursements from this time. Yeah, oh, wow, that's, that's it. All right, that's, any questions for me? That's how I handle a water break.
Are they concerns, like, do you have multiple water heaters there?
There are multiple water heaters.
So, is purchased all at the same time?
There probably were, yeah. There's no way of knowing. I know exactly what you're gonna say. There, there's really no way of knowing. I mean, we're at the mercy of the, the guts inside.
What about, i- is there any kind of alarm or anything that would, would let people know?
There, well, there, the motion sensors haven't detected the, the water probably because the, the custodian might have got there before it started dripping down in that first floor. Uh, if it's just on the ground level, there's, there's not a lot you can do with that. There might be some technology out there today that'll throw, throw a flow sensor out. I'm not, I'm not sure of that. But that, we didn't have those, I'll tell you that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, two D, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year school calendar presentation. Before we do that, uh, Cameron could issue a preschool flyer up, and I'll just briefly go through it. It's getting the time of year that we actually do our preschool head start screening, so I'll just do this for informational purposes. But our preschool and head start screening will be at Sand Gap Elementary on Friday, May fifth, and also Friday, May nineteenth. And that's for four-year-olds on May fifth, three-year-olds on May nineteenth, and that will be at the Sand Gap Community Outreach Building. If you want to go down, we'll read it. If we go to McKee Elementary, four-year-olds will be on Friday, April twenty-eighth. Three-year-olds are on Wednesday, May seventeenth, and that'll be here at the Jackson County Board of Education Presentation Room, or what used to be the band room, straight across the hallway. And Tyler Elementary, also, four-year-olds are on Monday, May fifteenth. Three-year-olds are on Tuesday, May the twenty-third, and that's also here at the Jackson County Board of Education Presentation Room, again, straight across the hallway. If you have any questions, you can contact Ms. Lomond Freeman, our preschool coordinator here at the forward office, at six zero six two eight seven seven one eight one. Again, Ms. Lomond Freeman, two eight seven seven one eight one. So any questions about that? Okay, we'll look at our twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. And this did go through our calendar committee process. I'll just briefly go through this. Okay, we start off on Monday the seventh with our opening day. As we've done in many years in the past, we had a plan day right after opening. That gives your teachers and staff an opportunity to prepare. It also gives a very short school week on the first week. If we go down to September the first, that's our Jackson County Fire Day. That's something we've done probably the last four or five years where we worked with the county fire board, and it's worked pretty well. Labor Day, obviously, on the fourth. We go down to October, fall break, we have a flex PD day on the seventh. I'm sorry, on the fifth, and on the sixth, the break day. All the PD has been completed. This is just a placeholder in the calendar. Again, all the professional development, professional learning has been completed at this point, and this is just a placeholder in the calendar. You actually have to have four PDs or the equivalent to what Ms. Norris, twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
Okay, if we move on down to November, we have a flex PD day again on the sixth, and that's really hard for me to see, so I can do the best I can with the numbers. On the seventh, we have election day. We do have Tyler Elementary that will be used as a public place. It's my understanding, Daniel, that Sand Gap will also be used as a public place this November. So by law, you cannot have school, you cannot have kids in the building when a school is used for a public place. So again, that's election day. If we go down to Thanksgiving break, it's like we've always done in the past. There's your third flex PD, your holiday and a break day. You go down to December, we have the full two weeks of Christmas vacation like we've always done. We'll scroll back up to January. And the calendar falls really well this year. The first is actually on Mondays, so the kids would return on Tuesday, January the second. Martin Luther King Day. We move down to February, there's no breaks in February. Obviously, we would probably have a snow day or have a virtual learning day, NPI day during that period. We go to March, there's a flex PD day, and that's actually CKEA Day. That's our fourth flex PD, PD day and final flex PD day. April, just like we've done this past year, we have a full week of spring break, which is great, I'm glad we can build that in again. And we go down to May, and the last day for students is on the fifteenth. If you see the M's, that's for makeup days. There's an election day as well on the twenty-first, I believe. Makeup days are just days that are required to be built in the calendar, and that's the highest number of inclement weather days that were used in the past five years. So I think that's fourteen. The most days we've missed in the past five years would be fourteen due to inclement weather. So that's a requirement by KDE that has to be built in. Overall, we have a hundred and seventy-four instructional days, four holidays, four flex PD days, one plan day, one opening day and one close day. Uh, everybody except the middle school is on quarters, and we have those broken probably about as close as you can break for grading periods. Forty-four in the first, forty-one the second, forty-three in the third, forty-three in the fourth, and the middle school quarters. We've got those broken, eight and fifty-eight days each. So that's a good calendar that has actually gone through the calendar committee process, and, um, I'll ask for any questions anyone may have at this point. Okay, thank you. Item two E, Personnel and Substitutes Report. As always, that's enclosed as an attachment for your review. With communications being completed, I'll turn the meeting over to Termon Neely with item number three.
Item number three, approval of Bill's Plan, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Hysler?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Item number four, approval of a meeting from the March twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three Regent's Board meeting, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hysler? Item number five, approval of the twenty-twenty-three Jackson County Public School Summer Success Academy Framework Plan, need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hysler?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Item six, approval of a statement of authority, uh, NSLP, that's indirect cost proc, uh, prop-
Procurement.
Procurement, I'll give you that here in a minute. Certified as, to the public, in the community eligibility provision, CEP eligible criteria and free implement steps for the Jackson County Public School System Food Service Program, need a motion?
Make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hysler?
Yes.
Yes, for me. That's my. Item seven, approval of a new security camera system for the Jackson County High School.
I'll let Stephen help you, is he still here? If I forget something, but two years ago, we did a new security camera system for Sand Gap Elementary and the Jackson County Middle School. It's an NVR, you know, it has high-definition cameras. Uh, this year, we did it for McKee Elementary and Tyler Elementary. I think it worked really well. What's your opinion on that, and you want to know the new camera system?
Uh, overall, they're really good. I mean, they're clear and you can see really well.
So this will finish our district-wide initiative by adding a new camera system for the Jackson County High School. It have new NVRs, state-of-the-art. It'll also have the high-definition cameras, just like we put in at the other schools. It does increase the capacity. I think currently the capacity of the high school is ninety-six, and it is the high school and also ATC. This with the four NVRs will give us increased capacity up to a hundred and twenty-eight cameras, so we can add actually thirty-two cameras if needed. And my philosophy, and Stephen's heard me say this many times, you can't have too many cameras. A little update on our school bus cameras, those will be done at the end of the year. We've already made arrangements for that to happen. We got completed twenty buses over Christmas break, and we have twenty more buses we'll complete as soon as, you know, the end of the year's up. So anything, Mr. Gabbard, you'd like to add about the security cameras?
No, I mean, it, like I said, it's gonna increase the amount that we, we have capability of, of doing there at the high school and, uh, it gives us a little bit better access to them as well, uh, and quicker access, uh, to seeing those. Based on what we've had from the other schools, those, those high, high, high-definition cameras really improve the quality and we pick up on a lot of stuff, so.
But we, we look forward to doing this project for the high school.
Need a motion?
Ms. Nicholson?
Second.
Second.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hysler?
Yes.
I have made approval of twenty-twenty-three Jackson County Public School Summer Feeding Program.
Ms. Dooley will publicize this, publicize all this later pending for approval, but it actually will go tentatively from June the fifth through July the fourteenth. It also works in conjunction with our Summer Success Academy. So we always have great participation, great participation with our summer feeding program and look forward to doing that, uh, across the district as well again this summer.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Hysler?
Yes.
I have now approved of the results planning process addendum to agreement between Partners for Real Impact and the Jackson County Board of Education.
This is a little bit unusual, it has no impact whatsoever on our GEAR Up grant, that tangs to the GEAR Up grant, which is at the Jackson County High School. The budget, the program, and it has zero impact, it's just something on the other side. And basically, Partners for Real Impact was affiliated with Brea College. They were like an arm or extension of Brea College. The last year, the board actually approved this agreement in August of twenty-twenty-two. At that time, they were still affiliated with Brea. Now that se, there's separation, so all this document does is, it's an addendum to the original agreement, which was forward-approved in August with effect of a purse. It's just an addendum that would create separation between Brea College and Partners for Real Impact. Partners for Real Impact will be its own entity. So again, it has no impact whatsoever on those. It's just what I would call a, a clear and legal separation document. Anything you'd add, Ms. Norris?
None.
After, okay.
Need a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Hysler?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
I'm going at the same because I wasn't on the board and all of this. We need to get.
Yes, for me. Item number ten, approval to advertise for annual bids for the twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four school year. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hysler?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Item eleven, approval to, to declare the following surplus, surplus program. Can you talk about here?
If you'll shoot that on the screen, Cameron, I'll just quickly go through it. The pending board approval, uh, we'll start advertising this on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth. We do it in the newspaper as required. We also put it on Facebook and any other avenue we can, so as many people as possible can see it. The closing time will be, it will be on Tuesday, May the ninth, at nine o'clock, and that's when I assume Mr. Gabbard will be open. So this year, we have a two thousand eight Chevy Impala. We have assorted scrap metal. We have a bush hog, which is actually located at the high school football field. We have brake grounds, which are located at the bus garage, assorted used tires, John Deere reel mower, small scraper blade, assorted sized wooden and metal doors, and some wooden pallets. So all this will be advertised pending board approval, and, uh, then we'll do our usual process on it. Anything to add, Mr. Gabbard?
No, I'm pretty standard. We have, we, about once a year, we have a lot of stuff we have to be ready for.
Okay, thank you.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hysler?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Item number twelve, approval of the Smith and Alpation for Non-Tradition Construction Day for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, PDE, review and approve, need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hysler?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Item thirteen, approval to, of the, of the meeting twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, I'll just quickly go through how we're gonna close the year out in this. If you want to go to the end right after spring break, Cameron, in April. Okay, we just have gotten back from spring break approximately a little over a week ago, and there that is. We go through, and the last day for students will be the twenty-fifth, which is on Thursday. Closing day for staff will be on the twenty-sixth, which is on Friday. I've talked to Dr. Kirby, plans on having the middle school promotion here at the Central Office Gymnasium on the twenty-fifth at eight-thirty. Special end, always enjoy going. And graduation will be on the twenty-seventh for the high school. So we actually closed the year out. The last day for students will be on the twenty-fifth. Election day, as we said earlier, we have two schools that will be used as public places, and, uh, there that is on the sixteen. And our KSA testing lenders, the last fourteen days, can take the summer assessment, or what I call the state assessment, and that's the last fourteen days of instruction. Correct, Ms. Norris?
It, yes, it opens on May fifth is the actual official day because we had to take that election day out.
So that's the way we finish the year out. We're very fortunate, we get out in May. We've had several breaks along the way, including two weeks of Christmas and full spring break, and that gives us plenty of time for everybody to rest up prior to our summer academy, which will start on June the fifth. We finished the year with a hundred and seventy-four instructional days, four holidays, four flex PD days, one plan, one opening, one closing, for a total of one hundred and eighty-five days. Any questions about the way, any question about the way we close the school year out as far as the school calendar? Okay, thank you.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Hysler?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Item fourteen, approval to the request emergency days for the Jackson County High School for the dates March twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirty, thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hysler?
Please.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Item fifteen, approval of proposed honor contract agreement, BG number twenty-two dash three-one-three, with Louis Brothers Incorporated pending KDE review and approve. And then item sixteen, we've got approval of the proposed honor contract agreement, BG number twenty-three dash one-five-four, with the Briar Bean Company Incorporated, pending KDE review and approve. And item seventeen, we've got a, uh, approval of a random agreement with a midway university teachers' education program at the Jackson County Board of Education. And then three items, fifteen, sixteen, seven, need a motion?
Any, any questions?
Any questions, anybody? Need a motion on those three items?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Hysler?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Yes, for me.